I'm going to call the meeting of the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is May 5th, 2014. If we could start with the invocation by Pastor Rodney Durand, Fellowship Bible Church.
Pray with me. Father in heaven, we thank you and upfront acknowledge that you're in control, that you're sovereign, and that in that you're still loving, you're fair, you're good, you're just, and you rule over all. You created us, you made us. So we pray, and we pray for, well, we thank you for our policemen, our firefighters, Lord, our street crews, and it's all the work that they do. And so that's what you keep them safe. Lord, pray for our farmers. It's a great time of year, but keep them safe as they get in the fields. And we pray for, I guess, your will to be done and harvest ultimately. You, again, send the rain and sunshine. You make it happen, but we pray for safety for them. Lord, we pray for the Sikafus family, for Tyler, and ask, I guess up to us, Lord, we would just pray for full healing, restore him, Lord. But if that's not your plan, your will, Lord, we ask for your grace on that family to get through maybe a long, tough season, but we commit them to you. Lord, we thank you for our teachers and our students, for our kids, our youth. Lord, as they come in the last month, the last weeks of the school year, help them to finish well, to finish strong, to learn lots, and them too, keep them safe, and for a good, safe summer, and all the activities of travel, and just rest, we pray. There's so many good things that you give us. Thank you for allowing us to live in Oskaloosa community like this. We have so many good things. Thank you for our leaders, for our authorities, that your word says you give to us, you give them authority and power to rule. Pray for wisdom, and all the big and small decisions, that your hand would be on them. Lord, again, thank you for them, and just bless this time, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Charlie?
Yes.
Would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Calli Jerry?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
For Stay?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Gates?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the community comments time. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council, asked to keep statements brief. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, and that so concerns can be properly researched and answered, perhaps away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would care to speak at this time? Name and address, please.
Anne Whiters, 152 Highland, Oskaloosa.
Okay.
Okay. I am approaching the city council, first as a member of the community, second as a parent who has raised three children, two of them in medical training, who I'd like to attract back to Oskaloosa, and thirdly, as a physician who has provided medical care in this community for 25 years. As a member of this community, I'm tired of watching others retire to greener pastures. We have all seen the migration of longtime Oskaloosans to West Des Moines, Texas, Florida, and other areas. Why do people leave our community for other areas? Well, I don't think we can compete with the weather in some of those areas, but I suspect some move because of the amenities other communities have that Oskaloosa doesn't. The Blue Zones Project offers Oskaloosa a comprehensive way to improve our lives that touches on everything in our community, from how we choose to eat, to how we choose to get from point A to point B, to how do we choose to spend our free time, which all impacts how we feel about living here, and hopefully, how long we get to live here. As parents, we want what is best for our children. Most children don't get near enough physical activity. Sure, many play sports, participate in PE, but what they're missing is the in-between activity, the walking, the biking, the just being active. Let's make Oskaloosa a better town for kids and adults to get around by means other than automobiles. As we try to recruit professionals, including physicians, to Oskaloosa, I can't think of a better recruitment tool than to be a Blue Zone. This will make Oskaloosa stand out as a place where we value our quality of life so much that we are willing and able to create an environment that promotes healthy behaviors. As a physician, I can tell you that health behaviors are extremely hard to change. Most everyone here has been on a diet, or made a New Year's resolution that lasts for a short while, and then we fall off. Many people have tried multiple times to quit smoking. Our bodies and minds seem programmed to make bad choices, and we live in an environment where bad choices are everywhere. The proven and scientifically validated method to improve the health of individuals and populations is to change the environment that we live in. Now, before we get all hyped up and paranoid about Big Brother, and "Don't tread on me", and "It's my constitutional right to eat french fries," settle down, relax, check your blood pressure. Nothing about Blue Zones Project has anything to do about eliminating choices. It's all about expanding them. It promotes healthy behaviors over unhealthy behaviors, but does not take anything away. It raises awareness and increases opportunities to make healthy choices. It lets people who want to be healthier vote with our wallets when we go out to eat, when we buy food at the grocery store. It will have an impact on our choice to raise our families in Oskaloosa, our choice of who we want to work for. I believe our government is responsible for setting policy that affects public safety and public health. That's why we have police departments, fire departments, the Department of Public Health. We have laws telling us to wear seat belts, laws that makes this room smoke-free, laws that list the ingredients and how many calories are in the foods we buy. I am sure tobacco companies would love to sell cigarettes in our schools, but there are laws against that. For the first time in our history, we face the prospect that our children's lifespans will be less than ours. Despite all the wonderful medical technology, advances in medications, and everything, it looks like chronic disease will kill the next generation of children at an earlier age. If that's not a wake-up call, I don't know what is. It's our environment that's killing us. We have the opportunity to change that, and we have an obligation to do so. Thanks.
I'm Shirley Frye, 316 Kioma Village. So I'm not part of your constituency. I'm out of the city limits, but very interested nonetheless in all that Oskaloosa offers. I'm a volunteer with the Ecumenical Cupboard, which, as you probably know, serves people in poverty, people that are often excluded from the opportunities that most of us find just right there for us. So I'm happy to let you know that at the Cupboard, we will be putting things out, to be specifically about the Blue Zones Project, for probably the next year, maybe even longer than that. The folks that come to the Ecumenical Cupboard are not people that have access to the newspaper necessarily, or would read it if they did find themselves somewhere where it was available. But they are used to picking up free things at the Cupboard, and it will be very easy for me, using the Blue Zones Project materials, to put a little slip, a colored piece of paper that has one idea, or maybe two, about making healthier choices and being healthier people. These folks are often the people that make the emergency room, their primary care provider, and so prevention, preventative measures are very important for them, as they are for all of us. But these folks have fewer resources. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the Blue Zone, and I do want you to know that the Ecumenical Cupboard will be a place that will provide some education for the Blue Zone Project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some handouts, if I may give them to the city council.
Certainly. And also lift up that microphone when you get back there.
Great.
My name is Walter Tippett. I live at 2651 Luminary Lane in Oskaloosa, and my wife Pam and I own the property at 409 15th Avenue East, at the corner of 15th Avenue and South 4th Street. So we want to comment on the proposed parking ban on South 4th Street. This parking ban would create a problem for us. We need the parking. We own the house. It's a rental property, and the folks that own the property on the opposite corner, who are also here, would have a problem too, if there's no parking on that street, on South 4th Street. This whole issue started with a letter from Mr. Applegate that owns Precision Yield on the corner of South 4th and 13th. The letter is the first detachment there, and in his opinion, the parking is a problem on South 4th. He mentions that he has 40 to 50 semis that come there per year to deliver his inventory, and some of them take South 4th Street. Also that there are smaller trailers, basically pickup trucks with fifth-wheel trailers that are used to deliver his materials on South 4th Street. He mentions there in the letter that there's constant truck and bus traffic on there, but that's not really accurate. There are occasional trucks that go through there, through South 4th, that cut through. It's kind of a shortcut. And there are buses certain times of the day, Monday through Friday during the school year, that go there, going back and forth to the bus barn. But in reality, parking on that street is only a minor inconvenience for folks like Mr. Applegate that have a business there. We can't see how there's any tangible effect on the success of his business, his profitability, or his ability to grow his business, or anything. And we feel that it's something that he wants, not something that he needs. But for us, it's a bigger deal, because we need the parking there. And it's not just an occasional inconvenience, but it's every evening, and during the night, every day of the year, that that parking's needed. So there's a map there. It's a second handout that just kind of shows the, an overview, kind of a top view of the neighborhood. And the lower-left corner is the house that we own on the corner of 4th and 15th. The letter that I'm referring to makes reference to ABC Metals, and Beanstra's Trucking, and Pamco, as well as the bus barn. And you can see that some of those are actually closer to 7th Street. The only business that actually does receiving on South 4th using trucks is Tim Sparks' drywall business. Mr. Sparks, in answering the questionnaire on this issue, said that he saw no problem whatsoever, and that he would recommend no change to the parking that's on both sides of the street there. All the other businesses, including Precision Yield, do their receiving on 13th. 13th Avenue and 7th Street are bigger streets that are more up to the task of truck traffic than 4th Street is. Like I said, 4th Street is really just a shortcut, and these businesses could get along just fine, actually, if there was no truck traffic at all on 4th Street. There would really be no measurable impact on those businesses. Actually, 4th Street is used by trucks only to go onto 15th Avenue to the west. Going to the east, it makes more sense for them to use 7th, and that's what they do. So there's really two scenarios. Vehicles wanting to go east are coming from the east on 15th Avenue and using 4th Street. Vehicles going out, if they're large vehicles, you can see in the third handout there, a school bus going out. Now, the school bus is used the middle of the street, and the reason they use the middle of the street is because they're turning right onto 15th, and they need to be over there in order to make that turn. They can't stay in the right-hand lane and make the turn onto 15th into the near lane on 15th. So, in other words, eliminating the parking, this is really not a parking issue at all for this scenario, because they need to use the middle of the street anyway. And if a vehicle wants to turn in there, they just have to wait, just like on any other intersection. So what about the other scenario, when vehicles, large vehicles like buses or trucks are trying to turn into South 4th, coming from the west on 15th? Well, they can make the turn, because it's a bigger radius, coming across the lane to turn into 4th Street. And it's really no worse than any other street. South 2nd Street is basically a clone of South 4th Street, just down the hill, two blocks over. There's no difference in the intersection. It's a T-intersection going into 15th with the same traffic flow, and the width of the curb opening into the street is the same, is 28 feet. There's parking allowed on both sides of that street, and Cloud's shipping department is on 2nd Street. I went by there today. There's six big overhead doors where all the finished goods come out, the big loads of fire hydrants and valves and things that they ship. Where do they go? Down 2nd Street, or up 2nd Street? Where do the empty trucks come to go pick up a load? They come right up 2nd Street. It's no different from 4th Street, and there's no problem there. There never has been a problem there on South 2nd Street. So we feel that there should be no need for restrictions on South 4th either. If a large vehicle is trying to turn in there, and another is trying to leave, one just has to wait momentarily. It happens all over town right now, where trucks have to, when trucks are trying to turn, somebody has to just pause and use some courtesy and cooperation to get around town. So, in the fourth picture there, you can see that actually on 4th Street, there's more room than on 2nd Street, because on 2nd Street, there are curbs, just like most of the streets. 7th is the same way, and there's 28 feet between the curbs. On South 4th, just off the edge of the white car, the fender of the white car is the curb. You can see that car is parked mostly off the street. The overall width of that street, including the areas, the little aprons where the cars park on both sides, is about 35 feet. Compared to 2nd Street, that's only 28 feet. So 4th Street, in other words, is less of an issue width-wise than South 2nd Street. So we feel that this doesn't justify going to the extreme of an ordinance to take care of this issue, to prohibit the parking. It might add minor convenience to some that want to travel through there with a truck. Has no measurable effect on anybody's business, but has a clear detrimental effect on our business, on who we can rent to, even the value of our property, as well as our neighbor across the street. And we've already taken steps to try to relieve any concerns here by asking our tenants on both sides of the street to park away from the corner. And that's what we've done. And we've been out there, we've spent a lot of time out there, working on our property and so forth. We've never seen issues there, like was described in the letter, that voices the concern. So we actually feel that this matter should be dropped. My wife Pam has some other comments she'd like to make regarding this. Go ahead.
Can I ask you just a quick question? How deep is your property there?
You mean off the street?
Yeah, no, just how, from north to south. North to south, yeah.
North to south? Well, if you, I guess the best way to look at it is on that second handout there.
Is that letter eight? Are you on page eight?
Page two.
Two.
Page two, sorry.
Then I can look it up if you don't know it. I just thought you might.
Yeah. No, I guess the depth, I don't know, offhand.
I can't answer that somewhat.
Go ahead.
My name is Pam Tippett. I live the same place he does, out on Luminary Lane. When this matter first came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission, one of the things that I assured them at that point in time was that we would talk to our tenants, and I would talk to my neighbors, about having those who are parking there to move back from the stop sign. The legal requirement is 10 feet from the stop sign. At the back corner of my house there is about 60 feet off of the stop sign, and my tenant now kind of uses that as his, where he parks behind there. Our tenant's on the other side. We talked to him just a couple of hours ago. His children use, as you, if you can see, on handout A, off the back of his house, there's a little patio there, they park from there on back, away from the, so there's 60 to 70 feet there from the stop sign. I'm a woman driver. I drive a pickup truck with an 18-foot trailer and all of my equipment on it when I mow and take care of this property, and even I can get around that corner in 60 to 70 feet. So I believe that where the current parking is does not truly constitute a hazard. Perhaps in the wintertime, when the snow accumulates, and the street does narrow up at some point, there may be, and I am just hazarding a guess here, because the letter, the date on the letter that expresses the complaint was February, and this issue came up to the Planning and Zoning Commission in March. But when I went to the planning and zoning meetings, the first one in March, one of the commissioners asked the representative of the engineer's office, have there been any accidents there? His answer was no. And after the discussion by planning and zoning, they arrived at the conclusion that what congestion was there most of the time was not a result of the parking, but as a result of the increased traffic and the size of the vehicles that are using the street. And a vote was called for, and an, on the ordinance eliminating the parking, and planning and zoning declined to call for such an ordinance at that time. In an attempt to address the true cause of the congestion, planning and zoning offered the solution of a one-way on South 4th, so that everyone could continue to use the street. The engineer's office said that another survey would be needed on that proposal. The survey was made, and the results brought to the planning and zoning meeting, the next planning and zoning meeting, which I attended. And planning and zoning, after reviewing the results of the survey, and hearing further discussion, actually, some of the commissioners went there and observed that intersection themselves from time to time. And again, by vote, they declined to eliminate, they declined to eliminate the parking there. Specifically, one of the commissioners asked if those objecting to the one-way in the survey had been notified and asked to participate in this meeting. A representative of the engineer's office said indeed, they had been invited, but they had declined. And as my husband said, we feel like we've gone above and beyond what the law requires, so that we don't contribute to an ongoing problem there. But, and even the survey by Mr. Sparks indicated that he didn't think it was, it wasn't going to result in an inconvenience for him too. But you might be wondering why a recommendation to restrict the parking didn't get passed planning and zoning. And that is in part because of the discussion and the concerns that I had, that would happen if you did eliminate the parking on South 4th. Where would our tenants park? Well, if you look at the initial map there, marked A in your handouts, you can see that there is a really short distance from the end of our driveways to the intersection of South 4th. From my driveway, it's about 50 feet. From the other driveway on the other side of the street, it's less than 25 feet. If you eliminate parking, and all of our vehicles go into the driveway, the driveways are 36 feet, and the average vehicle is 15 to 18 feet. If you stack them up bumper to bumper in our driveways, then you will be creating the scenario in the handout of these pictures here, that is marked A. This first picture, I'm sitting in my car at the intersection of South 4th and 15th, and looking west. That truck that you see there is in the end of my driveway. As you can see, it's pretty, there's another, in the second picture, there's a vehicle in front of it, and you can see that the view to that, to the west there, is blocked. You have to advance into the intersection in order to see past that vehicle. Essentially, you are creating the scenario, on both sides of that street, of a tunnel because of the parked cars there, with a blind corner. In the next, in the next handout there, you can see how far, actually, there's, at the top picture, I am pulled out past the stop sign. There's a telephone pole. I look to my right, saw the truck there, attempted to take a picture, and that's how close he was to me by the time I could even snap a picture. The bottom picture is how far out in front of the stop sign I was when I took the picture above it, considerably far out there. So, as you can tell, in the other scenario, on the other side of the street, that distance, that gap is even shorter. If you pull up there and roll out, pass into the intersection, it is less than one second from the time you can see a vehicle pass those parked cars to the west, and less than a half of a second before you can see an oncoming vehicle coming from the east. In my opinion, that hazard is much greater than any other hazard that may be there now. And it will be created if we don't have any other parking. I think that, I believe personally, that is a disaster in the making.
So just to conclude our position, we were there today, and the school buses were coming back to the bus barn. The neighbor across the street had his vehicle parked 70, about 75 feet from the intersection on the east side of 4th, 75 feet off of 15th, and we had a car parked where this photo shows in this handout number four. And the buses were able to wheel in there. They didn't even slow down. They just came right around the corner from, heading east on 15th, whipped around the corner, and there's all kinds of room. And a semi would have all kinds of room there too. So we just feel this, that, we don't know how this, why the whole thing got started, but we just feel it's, it's not, it doesn't warrant any kind of action, because it's just a matter, it's no different from any other intersection, where there's occasional truck or bus traffic in the city, where people get along and cooperate and coordinate their driving.
One comment you just made there, we considered at last meeting, was to only have parking, no parking so far back to the curb. And so you're saying if we did something 60 to 75 feet, that was why I was asking the depth of your property, then we'd create room, and we would then allow room for you to have somebody to park at the northern side, right? So we could look at that?
Yeah, you could look at that.
To solve both things, right?
Yeah.
To help everything.
Yeah. I think that would be another option, you know, if it's felt that there needs to be some action taken, that if there were parking restricted a certain distance from the curb, that would, you know, that would be something. I don't know that it's even necessary, but in parking 60 to 70 feet, that's even more than needed, you know, frankly.
But I mean, and again, I don't know the exact amount, but that's why I was asking that question. Because I go that way a lot. I have one of the buildings that I disposed last week, and I'm over there almost every day, and there are... every day, and there are issues, and I've seen them and dealt with them, and, and I'm happy to abstain from the vote, too. But I'm just trying to figure out how we could work a solution for the buses, for the trucks, as well as people using that road.
That would be an option.
Okay.
One thing that I, that I can say, that, that I can speak to, that one of my tenants uses the driveway, and the other one parks on the right-of-way, kind of, off to the side there on the west side of the street. My neighbor on the other side, on the other hand, has two teenage children that essentially are not there during the day when they're in school. And the parking is primarily used in the evening hours, and I would say, you know, prior to school hours in the morning. If you put three vehicles from the back of my house there, just on the west side, I'm not sure you can get three vehicles in there.
That wasn't going to limit on either side, just, but move it back from the curb on both sides.
Oh, back from?
Yeah.
Oh, both sides, yeah.
From 15th on, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Right. I, I don't see at all why that would be a problem. As a matter of fact, I asked at the last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, because we did this at the first one, if there had been any feedback since we had had the parking moved back, and the engineer's office hadn't received any feedback at all from there. But, you know, at this point in time, I don't see why there would be a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else care to speak?
I'm Nancy Shipman. My husband and I own the other property on 15th. And I just have a concern. I feel that if the person who had the issue would have contacted us, you guys wouldn't have had to be involved. Whatever happened to that, kind of, communicate with your neighbor? Just a thought.
Does anyone else care to speak at this time? Okay, we'll move on. Item number five is the consent agenda. Things that are routine and generally non-controversial. Do we have a motion to pass the consent agenda? Okay, any discussion?
I have one question. Item G. About disposable surplus city-owned equipment?
Yep.
Are we going to do any, like, city yard sale or something?
We're going to auction off.
Okay.
Just if it's junk, we throw it away. Receive permission to do that.
Okay.
I got one question, Mayor. On the fees, I know last year we got it, it was, it was easy because it was red, black, but are the fees the same as last year? They're all the same. There is, there is no change.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Calagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item number six is the announcement of vacancies. First is the Building Code Board of Appeals. We have two vacancies to fill. That's upon appointment and serve with pleasure the mayor. This is a five-member board that meets as needed with currently three males serving and two vacancies. And then also the Water Board, one vacancy to fill upon appointment to an unexpired term that ends on June 30th, 2018, and one vacancy for a six-year term that begins July 1, 2014, ends June 30th, 2020. It's a three-member board that typically meets the first Monday after the 10th of the month. Two males currently serving, one vacancy. Okay, moving on to the regular part of the agenda. I'm going to skip ahead to item B. I understand Mr. Ryman has another obligation, and so with that in mind, this is to consider a resolution adopting a proposal for employee life insurance from National Insurance Services, health insurance from Sun Life Financial, with Wellmark as the administrator, and Classic Blue PPO and Flex Plan administered by WageWorks fiscal year 2015. Brad?
Thank you, Chris Walberg. Appreciate it.
Just quickly, on the table of contents, we're going to go through the ancillary coverages of the life, vision, dental, and the voluntary life, the flexible spending account, then we'll go through the medical renewal. We will not go through the group history. We can always use that back for reference, which I assume most of you have been following throughout this process for the last couple of years. And then also the changes that are going to be required by the law. Quickly, the voluntary vision, the voluntary dental, the group term life and AD&amp;D, the group voluntary life renewal, and the flexible spending accounts, there's no change on the cost for those. So that's a, no change in that. Okay? Any questions on those coverages? The next one is the medical coverage. For those of you, I think pretty much everybody looks real familiar here, so we've gone through this process three or four times. But the bottom line on the renewal is, is really breaking down into four categories. First of all, the annual administration fees. As you recall, back in November, first administrators decided to dissolve and move all their business over to Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield. They agreed on the administration costs until, on all their groups that they had with, first anything that moved to Wellmark, they're going to keep all their costs fixed until their upcoming renewal. City of Oskaloosa's renewal is July 1st, so they held those rates and from November, yeah, from November 1st, we'll hold those till July 1st. But effective January 1st, 2014, the fixed costs are going to go up 12.54, 12.54 percent. The majority of it's coming from what they call, if you look at the network access fee, majority of it's coming from the blue card. And one of the things that you did not have before is you hadn't, didn't have an out-of-network benefit, but now you have an out-of-network benefit, but Blue Cross Blue Shield and FAI agreed they wouldn't change anything. So because now you have an out-of-network benefit, which is called the blue card, your employee, the employees of the city can also travel outside the, the state of Iowa and have an in-network benefit for them as well. So it'd be like if they were in the network and had the same kind of benefit, which is a good thing for the city because you're going to continue to get the same kind of discount from your claim as you were getting back here in Iowa. So that's a plus. Even though you look at it from a $4.95 to a $6.95, that seems like a significant jump, but in the long term, you just take one person out of state to pay for that dollars down the road. So that's one of the major costs in there. The next thing is the reinsurance coverages. The biggest one on this one is we currently have an ongoing claim, and will continue to go ongoing, and pretty much that's what the increase on this is. There is, as I told Mike and Amy, there's, there is a little bit of Patient Protection Act cost in there, but not as much as you'd think. Most of it's coming from an ongoing situation. Okay? One thing about the Sun Life that you have your reinsurance with, which is a good thing, they could have, a lot of carriers would have come in and said, you know what, we'll take you, we'll continue to take your, your plan, but we're going to put what they call laser onto this current employee, which means right now you have a $40,000 on each one of your employees. They could have came in and said, we're going to put $140,000 on that person. So that's an expense to the city, sending under the 140. So that's another thing about, you've got Sun Life, which is a good reinsurance carrier, that wouldn't happen. The same thing with Wellmark. We did go to Wellmark for an optional quote, and they were much higher. So we felt this was the best one. So the biggest change there is, what's happening there is going to be the ongoing claim. But if you add the fixed cost, the administration and the reinsurance cost together, it's a 29.33 percent increase. Now, the good news is, is the aggregate factors didn't change very slightly, point, and I asked, why do we just match it? But the underwriters got the exact number there, 0.22 percent increase. So those ag factors are really what the claims are, that anything under the $40,000 specific would be the city's risk. So if you, if you were to put this into a fully insured world, where, because you're self-funded, if you were going to put it into a fully insured, insured world, you had a 5.99 percent increase. It's just that fixed part in there that was, that was the biggest increase. Anybody have any questions on the renewal, on that portion? The next page is the very fine print up there on the screen, but in your packets, is just the, the history. I did do a little bit of year-to-date history for you here on the right side, that probably be the biggest one to look at, which I found was very interesting, that in the, since 2007 slash 2008, your claims have never, never been this low. This is the lowest year you've had. If it stays on track to where it's at today, you'll have the lowest amount of claims you've had. So you've had a good year, it's just, just one incident that's really, and if you look at the premium equivalent, it's about as close as you can get to wherever, you haven't been any, that low in a long time. So for the kind of plan you have right now, very, 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 very rich, these rates are very, 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 very good, so if I were to put it into full insurance. Any questions on the history? Please feel free to review that if you have any questions, get back to Mike or Amy if you've got any questions on it, or now, anybody? The last thing, I just want to mention that because of Patient Protection Act, there's a few changes that got to happen effective July, July 1st, 2014. We now have to have an open enrollment. May 19th to May 30th will allow each employee who's not currently insured on the plan, whether they're dependents, they can come on the plan, open enrollment. The other thing is, there's no pre-existing condition. So if you do have somebody that, that has a pre-existing condition, can come on the plan in May 19th through May 30th, effective July 1st. That's changing. So just be aware, there's a little bit more risks now. You know, this is part of the, part of the vote that came through, that this is what is going to happen, and some of this will, may come back, and you may take on some risks you weren't, you were eliminating before. Because before you said, no open enrollment unless you had an event, which is you were married or had a child, whatever, you could come on the plan. But if you came on, you were subject to pre-existing condition. Those two items are no longer on the plan anymore. So just be aware of that's a risk the city's now taking on. Also, effective.
Quick question.
Yes.
Is that an open enrollment that has to have a period annually?
Yes, it is an annual open enrollment. It is an annual open enrollment. This is the first time you've ever had an annual open enrollment.
But it'll be every year.
It will be every year. Uh huh. Uh, the period, that may be a little bit flexible, but we'll give the employees enough notice and time. A lot of this has to do with me presenting to you, having the paperwork signed, back to Wellmark, have them print the summary plan certificates, and then being timed for the May 19 employee meeting so that we can give it to, since, a lot of it has to do that. We may even have it earlier next year. That may happen. But there's going to be a period here that everybody's going to have the opportunity, and they will be notified that there is one. Amy, we'll let everybody know that.
Okay, thank you.
Very good question. Also, the, they're going to remove the $2,000, $2 million annual maximum on essential health benefits. Now, those are listed right there, are things that you have already, but one of the ones is preventive and wellness services that now have to be covered at, since it can't be a $2 million, that's not going to happen, but anyway, so that now has to be removed from the plan. Also, the law said that you could, you had to include your employees' dependents, so they're age 26. But the law did say if you, they had coverage elsewhere, you couldn't, couldn't allow them to come on. That's gone. You can't do it anymore. So they got coverage elsewhere, open enrollment, they can now come on if they're under the age of 26. All right? And then the last thing, I just want everybody to know that effective July 1st, this is your first time, because of the way your renewal fell, that you have to pay the Pecori fee, which is the dollar per covered member per year. That's only a dollar. And I think it, $167, $170 is what it is per year. It's not the $5.25 that's been ongoing every month. You pay that $5.25 per covered member per month. So if you have a household of six, you're paying six times five, 25 times 12. Okay? This is just a dollar one time per year. Okay? And then there's another one, the annual health insurance fee, you don't have to pay because you're self-funded. That's nine bucks. Here are a lot of employers who are fully insured, so that's one advantage of being self-funded. You can eliminate that $9 per covered member per month, that you don't have to pay that. So that's all I had. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you very much. Let's see here. Yeah, so in the explanation of the insurance, it mentions the current monthly premium charged to the city departments for single would be $483 and $1,162 for family. The city budgeted the same for fiscal year 2015 with $483 for single and $1,162 for family. The suggested premiums stated here are $631 for single and $1,607 for family, which means the city may be using accumulated fund balance to make up the difference, as this change represents a 29 percent increase. Staff has recommended the review of the plans and approval of the employee life insurance, health insurance, and the Flex Plan for fiscal year 2015. Do we have a motion supporting that?
So will. Take it.
Nobody's smiling.
You could say insurance.
Yeah, discussion.
Just when we say that, maybe it says down the budget consideration, how much of the fund balance will that be using?
It just depends on how many claims we have. We have plenty of fund balance, but what we, what we, where we've been is about 65 to 70 percent of claims. So the 903 is if.
Worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario.
And we've been approximately 65 to 70 percent of that.
Be on the safe side. I'd say 70, just to.
70, okay.
That would be. So we don't anticipate a significant decrease in the fund balance that we have. In fact, year-over-year, it's either grown or it's, it's been flat. So we're in a healthy position as far as the fund balance goes.
But if it did go 100 percent, it's not up there. But it never goes 100 percent, what you did.
Oh, if it went 100 percent, we'd be fine. We, we would just be using fund balance, so then we would be adjusting at a budget next time, probably looking at raising the premiums.
Next is $820,000 of fund balance there, so.
Yeah. And, and we're up from last year about $34,000 in the fund balance at this same time.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Calagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Okay, I'm going to take us back to item 7A. This is the one having to do with the South Central Regional Airport Agency. Chairman Jim Hansen is to be here to present to, provide a project update and review on the efforts made to date by the SCRAA Board to complete the studies necessary to evaluate the potential sighting of a regional airport project in Mahaska County located between Oskaloosa and Pella. Also, an updated timeline. Floor is yours, Jim. I don't, I don't have the luxury of PowerPoints.
Thank you. I am Jim Hansen. I'm Chair of the South Central Regional Airport Agency and one of your appointees to that board. The agency was formed now two years ago. Hard to believe that that's gone by, but two years ago, by way of a 28E agreement between the cities of Oskaloosa and Pella, as well as Mahaska County. And purpose of the, the agreement was to develop, build, and run a regional airport somewhere along 163 in Mahaska County. So what I want to talk about tonight is where we've been and where we are and where we hope to go, and I hope not to take too much of your time. Currently, Phase 1 is estimated to cost approximately $24 to $30 million. FAA grant funds will pay up to 90 percent of what are called the non-vertical or flat costs of that, the costs of the FBO and the terminal, and the, the hangars and other things will be split between Pella and Oskaloosa. Right now, I think the slide says that the primary runway is thought to be, at this point, 5,500 feet. We now anticipate that it will be built to 6,500 feet with the potential of expanding it to 7,000. There'll be a terminal building. By the way, we had a meeting with airport users in Pella, I'd say, two, three weeks ago, where several, I think there was probably 25 to 30 pilots came to talk about the terminal was, and the hangars and so forth. Very good meeting with them. They were very interested in the project, offered, offered good criticism as well as good commentary about the, about the project. And the site will be capable of providing a precision landing approach. The, the demand for this airport stems from the safety issues at the Pella Airport and in handling larger airplanes. And you can see in those, those pictures, these are going to be Class C aircraft, which discussed at length at various public meetings and so forth. We set up a site selection committee within the board, weighed 30-some factors affecting each site, and came down that Site A was our preferred site. And that's the site that's located closest to Oskaloosa. You can see, that's hard to see on that one. We'll go to the slide at the end a little bit and we'll talk about the site itself. As I indicated back in October of 2012, we selected an engineering firm. Our action plan was approved by the FAA in March of last year. We selected Site A in May of last year. And we directed our consultant to put together an airport layout plan and a site selection Recently, we have also met with seven of the nine landowners in Site A. Those have been productive meetings. As I indicated, we had a users' meeting in Pella. And in late last month, several of us met with FAA officials in Des Moines to discuss the process and how things are moving along. Next steps on this, we expect an airport layout plan to be completed by mid-July of this year and a master plan to be completed in September. There'll be an environmental assessment that needs to be completed. These are all requirements of FAA regulations. Along with that environmental assessment, there'll be a public hearing that's required where people can come and talk about the plan and the environmental impact of that And all of that will be submitted to the FAA by the end of the year or sooner, hopefully. We hope at that point, within, I can't remember exactly what the FAA told us, within four to six to eight weeks, if they come back with an approval by first quarter of next year, we hope to begin land acquisition. And we expect that that will take, optimistically, we hope, two years to do. It'll be, from that point, we'll go two years, so into 2016 with land acquisition. Construction will go through 2017 through 2019 with the goal, I think, of opening this in 2020. We originally said 2021. We are optimistic that 2020 might be the date. As far as land acquisition goes, we'll begin an appraisal process early next year and once that's completed, we can begin discussions with the landowners and follow the regulations required by the FAA for acquisition. This next slide shows the airport layout plan as it stands right now, anyway. It may be tweaked a little bit. But those different colors represent different landowners. So you'll see that there's nine different colors. And as I indicated earlier, we've spoken directly with 101 conversations with seven of the nine. And that, those conversations have gone fairly well. So I think we've been able to address some concerns, answer some questions that those folks had. And they brought up, similarly to the pilots at the users' meeting, they brought up some important issues that they had that we, it's actually good to know as we plan ahead and plan for either easements in the area or other types of issues. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you have.
You're going to put in an ILS system, is that right? You said precision landing, that's ILS?
Yes.
Is that determined by the FAA or is that something that you guys, I thought you had to have so many planes in there? Do you know?
I think it's going to be an FAA determination requirement of that.
So we will have the ILS? All right, great.
Jim, you explained the colors on the actual airport footprint itself.
Yep.
But the other square sections with the diagonal lines in them?
Yep.
What are they?
Good question. For instance, if you look over to the left, to the yellow property, and then there's yellow hash lines as well, that additional property is owned by that same landowner.
Okay.
So it shows, it shows not only the land that's directly impacted by the airport, but their surrounding land too. So for instance, there's a, if you look at the orange property, and it's got two 40-acre pieces with a little triangle cut out of it, more than likely, will buy the little triangle as well, but to not leave that little piece there for the landowner.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Jim? Well, thank you very much, Jim.
Thanks. Thank you.
Moving on to item C. This is discussion and possible action on the city's support of the Blue Zones project. This item, at the request of City Councilmember Ben Zetton and Councilmember Jimenez, is reserved for discussion and possible action relative to the city's current commitment to the Blue Zones project. After further review of the Blue Zones project pledge, there are three areas of scoring that the city must comply: complete streets policy, tobacco policy, and the healthy eating and active living policy. In order for the city to comply with the pledge requirements, it must score at least one point in each category totaling 13 points overall in the three categories. In the tobacco policy, a tobacco and smoking ban must be broadened to include either multi-unit housing or a comprehensive smoke-free policy in all outdoor workplaces and public places. Under healthy eating and active living policy, there are many possible items that the city could choose to limit choices, let's see, could choose to limit choices for its citizens so that we can nudge them into healthy behaviors such as prohibiting establishment of fast-food drive-throughs or establishing a healthy food and beverage policy at city-owned sporting event, youth sporting events, adopting building codes to require showers, changing facilities, and bike racks in municipal buildings, which are a few. These need to be voted into place as well as possible. Action taxed out, as well as possible additional tax dollars that need to be invested to comply with policies. Further consideration and review of many pledge line items must be discussed before being able to move forward with the Blue Zones policy pledge. And so with that in mind, I guess I wasn't sure where you wanted to go with this, Jason, so I'll leave it to you.
Well, I was trying to get this set up in a work session. Obviously, you didn't want it to go there, so I wanted to bring this back up. In order for us to even begin to get through this, we've got to talk about the tobacco policy. You've got one or two choices to get through this. And you've got to pick one of those two. You're either going to expand into multi-unit housing, which is telling people in their condos, condominiums, and properties that they own, they're not going to be able to smoke there. Or you've got to go the other route where we have a comprehensive smoke-free policy in all outdoor workplaces and public places. Once we figure that out, then, you know, we go on to the active living and healthy living policy, which we've got about 18 different things to choose from. And I went through this personally. I've got half of this list crossed off because it wasn't just as simple as sitting down and saying, which 18 are these going to do? Because there's some very broad terms in here. If you look at number 17, for example, establish a healthy food and beverage policy at city-sponsored youth sporting events. Well, who's going to determine what healthy food is? Is that going to be left up to us? I mean, I work in the egg industry, so I get this all the time. I work with the USDA, FDA, and I can tell you, every year, a doctor comes out of Harvard with a new study that redefines what's healthy and what isn't healthy. Who are we going to leave that up to? So if you decided, okay, you don't want to go with that option, unhealthy is in several parts of this plan. So who's going to determine that part of it? Is unhealthy that I have 16 ounces of pop? Is it 24? I mean, New York City tried to do this. Who are we going to leave that choice up to? And I guess the irritating fact to me is, you know, you take a guy at Cloud Valve that works, you know, a 12-hour shift, he could be burning 4,000 calories. He goes out and he wants to have a pop and a hot dog at a game, you, we could, it's on here. We could say, guess what? You're not going to have that hot dog and pop out there. Because somebody's going to have to determine what's healthy and what isn't, and that's on that list. So just going, okay, we're going to take this one, we're not going to take that one. Who decides that? And I'm just going to say, it's probably not going to be us. We'll probably pass that off to somebody else and they'll go, eh, let's take this off the list, or let's take that off the list. But before this can even really go to committee, just look at the tobacco policy. Which one of those two are you going to do? And, you know, I know that this is going to go to committee, but I think each one of us need to have input on this. Because you shouldn't be able just to hide behind the committee on this and say, oh, you know, I'm not going to pick this because the committee, you know, they recommended this. I would have gone a different way, but the committee recommended this. I think there's just too many issues in here that are so broad that you just say, I get where they're going, but from a government standpoint. You know, I'm all for, you know, go out, work out, live healthy. But we cannot be the enforcement arm. And, you know, especially when we're looking at tobacco policy, when you get into, what are we really going to do? And that's what I, that's what I'm trying to get into, is we got to talk about the details. You can't just blanket this thing. And I agree, there are several people up here, and we all know you're going to start diets and you're going to quit them. But we're not the people to say, hey, guess what? You can't commit. What about the people that signed up for Blue Zones? They don't get to quit now. They're asking us to be the enforcement arm. They got, what, 1,000 people that signed up? Guess what? You're still in. You know, we're not letting you off the hook. How do they get out? Outside of all of that, if you just look at the tobacco policy, which one of those two are you going to go with? Because if you can't get through that, if the seven of us cannot get through this tobacco policy, there's no sense in even moving forward with this at all. You've got two choices there.
I want to add something to, we've talked before about the tobacco policy section here. I did a lot of research. And from what I gather right now, and there is more information on each of these statements on this checklist, one of the Blue Zone representatives sent me detailed information in regards to, if you look on the tobacco section, item two there, detailed information for that one statement, what things we need to do. All right? So I looked into it and I pulled out the Iowa Code Smoke Free Act. Item two, we meet item two with this right here, the Smoke Free Act.
So we're already got about three points.
On top of that, on item one, there is, when it comes to multiple unit housing, I don't know if there's any multiple use in housing here in Oskaloosa that falls under the HUD requirements, but HUD has, which I have in my hand right here from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, they have a requirement for any multi-unit housing units that they have to have a smoking policy. HUD doesn't say the detail that the unit has to, you know, so here's the policy for that unit, for the multiple housing unit. Then a little bit more research, I found something in the state of Oregon, which was pretty interesting as far as in regards to item one, multiple unit housing. What they did there was, the city basically just said there would be a requirement in the rental agreements. The city didn't specify the details of the, you know, the nonsmoking. The owner of the rental unit had to have a smoking policy. How he did it, you know, was up to them. But at least the city just said, you need to have a smoking policy, and left it at that. And then they wrote one out. So I really think we should go to, I think we can cover, well, for sure, number two, but maybe a chance of even doing number one. But I think we need to get to planning on this and look at other items here under the healthy eating and active living policy here. Those, how many items is there? 18?
18.
But also, I think Blue Zones should provide us these information sheets that cover each of these statements. That, there's a lot of information on here to help make, you know, our decision on what we're going to take, what we're going to, you know, which ones we're going to look at.
Joe, what does it say in here that on number two, a comprehensive smoke-free policy in all outdoor workplaces?
Ah, you're going to make me look through this thing.
And here it says enclosed.
Yeah, let's see, it says public places.
It also says our enclosed area.
Right.
All public places, I'm assuming it's sidewalks, streets?
No, public places by the Smoke Free Act is like where people convene, like take the Emerson Park.
That's not enclosed.
No. You're talking about outdoor?
It says outdoor. You said we already--
Yeah, but I did mark that down in here to find what you're asking here. I did go through this, this is--
The Emerson representatives here.
There's like seven pages of this thing.
So we'd be talking like football stadiums. If you go to a Hawkeye game, you can't smoke in that stadium.
And that's the way it is in our stadium, too.
The pool there, Emerson Pool, you can't smoke in there. Emerson Park, the shelters, you can't, a group of people there doing a cookout or whatever, city activity, it doesn't matter, the group of people, you cannot be smoking in there.
Same with the Lacy Stadium.
Same with the Lacy Stadium.
But we're not going to get there with number two by what you're saying. Because it says here, we can't even, you can't even go out and smoke on the golf course if you read this.
But you can grill at a stadium, right? You can't smoke, but you can run, you can't smoke, but you can run a grill.
It's just not going to be this easy.
No, it's not.
No, it isn't? No. And you're getting seven of us to agree on this point by point, I really think we all need to be down there. I mean, I know, Mr. Mann, I know that we've got a bunch on the plate, I really do. And I don't want to be another one to put this on there. But, you know, you're talking about some very ambiguous terms, and I don't want to spend a lot of money on this. I mean, codes to require showers and changing facilities and bike racks, okay, yeah, we don't, that's just one of them. But there's so much in here to adopt policies. And that's what we're doing here. And we need to talk about specifically what those policies are and what we're getting into.
Agreed. But I think what we have now, and Natalie, you might be able to offer some insights on this, is that what Joe was given was definitions of what those statements mean. And so that has been the missing link that, and that's why I want this thing to go to a committee instead of engaging the full council in hours of work sessions, is I want to get a subcommittee of our council together to actually go through and do the learning that's necessary in order to pick this thing up. But it's not as simple as just going down and looking at these statements because they are broad. But there are definitions as to, you know, if you went through confirmation in a Lutheran school, what does this mean is the thing that shows up right behind that little chunk of the Apostles' Creed that you're trying to learn. It's the same thing with the Blue Zones. There is more meat to this. What we're seeing is the bare bones. And so from that perspective, that's why I want this thing to go into the planning committee. The conversations I've had have said that, yeah, it sounds like all the communities in Iowa can check the box. That they're going to get number two, there's three points, you've nailed it. Joe, what he has mentioned about the state of Oregon, says, okay, so if we come out and say, oh, every landlord of a multi-unit housing has to have some sort of a statement that says whether you can or cannot smoke in his units, he owns the darn things, that counts. So that might be five of the 13 points right there. But that's why I want it to go to committee, so that we don't get the whole council wrapped up in it.
But I think the whole council absolutely needs to be wrapped up in it.
Well, it'll get there. It'll get there.
But it shouldn't be filtered by somebody else. It shouldn't be, should be done out front, and you should be on the hook for supporting a policy--
this, is that what Joe was given was definitions of what those statements mean. And so that has been the missing link, that, and that's why I want this thing to go to a committee instead of engaging the full council in hours of work sessions, is I want to get a subcommittee of our council together to actually go through and do the learning that's necessary in order to pick this thing up. But it's not as simple as just going down and looking at these statements, because they are broad. But there are definitions as to, you know, if you went through confirmation in a Lutheran school, what does this mean is the thing that shows up right behind that little chunk of the Apostles Creed that you're trying to learn. It's the same thing with the Blue Zones. There is more meat to this, what we're seeing is the bare bones. And so for that perspective, that's why I want this thing to go into the planning committee. The conversations I've had have said that, yeah, it sounds like all the communities in Iowa can check the box. They're going to get number two, there's three points, you've nailed it. Joe, what he has mentioned about the state of Oregon, says, okay, so if we come out and say, oh, every landlord of a multi-unit housing has to have some sort of a statement that says whether you can or cannot smoke in his units, he owns the darn things, that counts. So that might be five of the 13 points right there. But that's why I wanted to go to committee, so that we don't get the whole council wrapped up in it.
But I think the whole council absolutely needs to be wrapped up.
Well, it'll get there.
But it shouldn't be filtered by somebody else. It shouldn't be, should be done out front, and you should be on the hook for supporting a policy that's going to regulate people.
Exactly right. Yes. And the way the committee system works is you have a subgroup of people who attack that problem, and it doesn't exclude anyone. So if the rest of the council wants to go to the committee meeting, they're welcome to do it. But let the committee at least do its work before we bring the whole council in and have to go through this whole learning exercise.
But if the majority of council doesn't even support what's hap, and that's kind of why I wanted to get here first, bring up this smoking policy, bring up some of this other stuff. If we're saying, we're not going to spend money, I want to know what I can take off the table before we even get there.
What do you want to, I mean, we've had this up in like three meetings about, and you say if the council doesn't support it. I mean, last week, we clearly did support it. There was a majority that we didn't want to, we voted down not supporting it, so we said we did support it. I know it wasn't unanimous, but...
We had never, we had never supported this.
We've done this three or four times, what else are we doing tonight?
We had never supported this back. We had said that we were going to continue to look at the application, and last week, no. Last week, I just made the motion for the city to withdraw from Blue Zones completely. I never made a motion to support it or not support it.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
I don't either.
Could you say that again?
I never made a motion last week to support Blue Zones or not. I said, let's withdraw. As the city, let's withdraw. You guys never gave support to this. And going back, even to the last meeting, everybody was talking about, say, let's just keep looking at the application, let's get to this point. And we can go back through that again, but when you look through what was proposed at that meeting back on August, back in October there, it was about supporting...
Do you want a motion on whether or not we as a council support Blue Zones?
I've heard what I've heard here.
Right. That's why I'm asking what you want. You put it on the agenda.
So you want to go with number two? Well, I need to know what you want to go with.
I want to go to the committee, I thought is what we were doing, but if you're saying it's because we haven't supported it, then let's take a vote on that.
Yeah.
Because you're right, if we haven't done that, if that helps, if that, did you feel that's an important step to go to committee?
No, I felt what an important step was is getting through the tobacco policy at this point.
Well, I think what you're trying to get to is, should government say that we own the air outside? And we don't. I mean, really, in a simple, simple term, that's it. We don't, we do not own the air outside. And we can't regulate that. How could we possibly regulate that?
If you're not going to get past number two, and there's a majority of people here that says, you know what, new information's come to light, I can't get past one or two of this tobacco policy, as far as what our commitment is to this pledge, we're not going to be able to get through it.
I just thought I heard that we can get to number two.
No, we can't.
Nope.
No, you can't.
Natalie, you're with the Blue Zones, could you take the microphone, please?
So I did speak with the state team, and we have already achieved those points with the policy that's already put in place for the Smoke Free Act. So you've already achieved that, you've already achieved three points for that, so...
So we've got that covered.
Right, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just not answering your question, though, is it?
I, I mean, I know where we stand on it, so...
Could I make one statement?
I don't know where you stand now with your research on it.
Well, that was my concern, that was the tobacco section, and then before I received this other information from Blue Zone, in regards to item two, I did a lot of investigation prior to that, and when I looked up the Iowa, what's it called? Smoke Free Act, sorry. I said, well, wait a minute, item two, sounds like it falls right into...
And she says it does.
Okay. You were going to say something else, Natalie.
Well, I have two comments. My first comment is, I live in the rural community, so the city council, this process is new for me, I'm learning the dynamics of how this works. And so I did a little research as well, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but one thing I researched was, like, what's the objective of city council? And so what I found in my research, it's to set the vision for our city. And when we look at the statistics for Oskaloosa and our youth, we look at what employers are saying about the cost and rise of healthcare. It would be great if we could get to the point of looking at the benefits of this and seeing if they outweigh the negatives. And I feel as if, you know, I've definitely made myself available to have conversations with everyone on the council, as well as the mayor and city manager, to answer any questions you might have. I do have detailed descriptions with research backing why these options are important for us as individuals, for our children, for future taxpayers, and I certainly would love to provide that to you as well. I would be happy to meet with you, Mr. Van Zetten, if you would like to do coffee, or I could answer some questions, I could bring somebody from the state team. We want to make sure that this is something you want to do, but you need to give us an opportunity to answer your questions. And it was my understanding that we would do that through planning committee. And the second statement, excuse me, I just want to make is, we've already logged 200 hours of individuals volunteering for Blue Zones Project. I really think that that demonstrates the need and the want for this in our community. And I just, I really beg you to just give us an opportunity. We have an exciting team, and Mahaska Health Partnership has already footed the cost of housing us and seeing the value in this. We're just asking you for your time in allowing us to explain what this could do for our community. Thank you.
Let me ask you, let me ask you a question while you're up there. On a national level, forget the city of Oskaloosa, on a national level, what's a Blue Zone doing for a nation? For example, food stamps. There's 47 million recipients out there that gets food stamps. Are we telling them now that they can no longer get pop, candy, cookies with their food stamps?
No.
Why? Wouldn't that be a good place to start?
Possibly.
Just a thought.
Right, and that is a thought, and I, you know, I don't have the ability to make that decision. I can voice my opinions, you know, as a citizen to our government, but I see a value in raising well-being, and so that's why I took an opportunity to leave a job that I had that was sustainable and venture into a position where I saw that we could make value and impact in our community. And so I'm choosing to make a difference in the community where I live and work in. And that may be all I can do as a citizen right now to improve the well-being, but at least I'm doing something.
I realize that, and I appreciate that. And I have nothing against the Blue Zone and the concept of it. I'm just saying, are we starting in the right places? Maybe we should start at the national level and start working down. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Can we make a policy on the food stamps, Mayor?
I'll rule it out of order today.
All right, let me know.
Are we asking for...
I don't know, Joe, where do you stand with the smoking thing right now?
Right now, from what I, the information I got in regards to item two, I'm all right with it.
Okay. I have no motion at this time.
Was that housing thing, was that federal housing only, or was that...
No, no, on the house, number one there.
That's two.
Yeah. Item one, where it talks about the multiple unit housing.
On the smoking issue.
Yeah. I was looking into that, and I saw something from HUD, if there's any multiple...
And that's why I said that was HUD.
That was HUD. And then the state of Oregon, and this was not in regards to HUD, this is private-owned...
I have one for my rental.
Rental place, right, that the city, I don't think it was the city, housing development of that city, I forgot what they call their office. But anyways, saying that to have the owners in their rental agreement to have some sort of smoking policy.
So the city was demanding of the rental property owner that they made a policy?
Just to have a policy.
The city demanded that of those people. Is that what you said?
It says it must disclose a disclosure of a smoking policy for the premises of which the dwelling is located. That's all it said.
So it could, the policy could be, could say, yep, you know, smoke if you want, pets if you want.
Yeah, the city didn't dictate, in other words, to the housing unit, well, here's where the smoking areas are and all that stuff. They left that up to the unit.
Whether you did or did not.
Pardon?
Whether you did or did not, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Again, I was just plumerity, I didn't really look in depth on it, but I just couldn't get information here.
And I heard you say, Blue Zone people say you called the state, and we already are in compliance for two, right?
My concern is, I don't want to come across as, okay, you will do this from the cities.
Exactly.
That's my main concern. If we start going down that road, then we're going to have probably different conversations there. But, but that said...
Don't we do that all the time?
Well, yeah.
In the interest of our city?
Yeah.
We do it almost every meeting. We say, you're not going to park here, you're not going to do this.
No.
That's what we do.
It's like someone said to me about this item one under tobacco, they said, well, some places tell you can't have dork, pets.
Pets.
As, yeah, that's the owner telling you that, it's not the city telling you that. So that was just small talk.
But don't we say things like, you can't let your pet run free?
Right.
I mean, that's the business we're in, city policy. We either believe this is good or we don't. I really want to thank Dr. Whitis for coming in tonight. I mean, if what she said to us doesn't get us behind this 100%, we've got to be smart about it. We're sending the wrong message about what we want this city to be in the future.
And not only what she said, if we just, we're all about business and bringing in business, we already have three full-time salaries funded by this. When a business looks at coming to Oskaloosa, we can point to this and say some of the things that we're doing and make us look more attractive. For our residents that are already here, she gave all kinds of reasons why we should do this. We already have 1,000 people that are excited about this and wanting to do it. I would hate to think that we are going to come back and say philosophically, we cannot support this. I just really urge all of you to get behind this. I think it's an excellent, excellent idea.
I talked to several people that signed up for Blue Zones, and not one of them saw this policy. Not one of them said, they go, they want you to do what? They go, what if I decide to quit? I'm not letting, you're asking your city not to let you off the hook. So, you know, in my industry, there's consumer protection programs that make sure that you don't sell a product that you don't tell the details on. And so that's, you know, when they started seeing this, all of a sudden said, listen, fine for me, and it's fine for businesses to make their decisions, but it's not fine for us as government to tell you what to do.
Maybe we should just call for another vote for support.
There's no motion on the table.
Well, does anybody want to make that motion?
Well, I think I'm one of the persons on the small planning group, and I'm more than happy to spend the time to work through this and do the research and bring it back to council, or anyone on the council that wants to come. I think you're on it, too, Joe.
Plan it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to go to a planning.
Okay.
Caution of council members showing up to that committee meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's not, not...
Three people are going to decide for 12,000.
We noticed those meetings, though, right?
But, what's that?
Because I've tried to do that, and he always kicks me out. So he won't let you do it.
Yes, we noticed those meetings, we asked that the subcommittee try to become the experts on the topic that's being discussed so that they can then relay their perspectives on the subject matter to the rest of the council, who oftentimes don't have the time or the desire to put their own additional research or effort into it. Now, that doesn't mean you can't do your own research and meet on your own and do that other due diligence, we actually encourage that. But this was just supposed to be a process that would ease you and your workload based on the other meetings. We've got work sessions scheduled for every meeting. We could certainly meet every Monday of the month. I don't think most of you want to do that, based on previous feedback. So the subcommittee's not making decisions, they can't. They're not, they're not a quorum. So the idea is that you have some debate, maybe you polish the debate up in a not-so-public setting on camera, and we come out looking good on something, and if we disagree, we disagree, but we do that in a professional way. Again, this is about our image, and so what happens in here, how we treat other people, that reflects on this community, reflects on us as an organization, me as staff, and honestly, it just, we really need to think about that, especially as we're trying to figure out what the brain of the community is.
There's absolutely no reason we shouldn't be able to talk about this in public.
You're the bosses, it just takes four people to make that happen.
There is no reason people shouldn't know what's happening, and that's all we're doing here.
But that's the point, is the council's going to come together again, once the committee is met, and you're going to have the opportunity to have a full discussion and debate. But I think the idea is that, again, you're going to have three people who have hashed out a lot of that topic or that subject matter in a setting that is probably a little more conducive to it.
I'm as right, I'm so right, I don't even have a left hand. And I'm so conservative, it makes most people sick. But on this case, and I know where Tom Geminez is, and we've talked a lot, and Tom protects a lot of that stuff, and I'm usually on Tom's side. But when Dr. Ann says that it's the first generation, and we all know this, this is in the news all the time, the first generation, it's not going to live longer in the United States of America, and most of it's from obesity, you know, I think we've got to try to do a part. And I've said every time we've had these meetings, and I'll sit, I'll help the subcommittee, whatever, I'm not voting for something that costs a taxpayer money, and I'm not going to vote for somebody that tells somebody what they got to do. But I think you can work around this. Now, Jason feels concerned that that'll backfire on us, and he could be right, but I can see, I'm the odd one, the smoking, that's a no-brainer to me. The complete streets, I had to research that, because I didn't know what complete streets were. Well, as it turns out, it's those funny-looking curbs we all got at the intersections that 15 years ago, when we did Streetscape, nobody, why did they have all that there? Well, that's a complete street, as I researched it. They have rules like that. You don't have to do it, it even says, the streets look different in a rural and urban area. So, you know, I just, I can come up with 16 or 17 points here. I think the committee will find the same and not step on anybody's toes. That's just mine.
Not seen any particular motions, so any other comments, or we'll move on.
So it's just going to...
It's going to committee. Yep. Okay. Item D. Consider an ordinance amending the city code of the city of Oskaloosa by deleting current code chapter 10.78, inserting in lieu thereof a corrected section to comport with the state statutes. This is the first reading. Chapter 10.78 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code addresses the use of ATVs and snowmobiles. The ordinance in its current form is based upon Iowa Code Chapter 321i, all-terrain vehicles, but does not perfectly comport therewith. The proposed ordinance amending chapter 10.78 deletes current city code chapter 10.78 and inserts in lieu thereof a corrected section to comport with state statutes. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion?
I'm all for it, but it looks like another one of these ones that we're tweaking it, and it needs tweaked, obviously, but then if we're going to go out and start enforcing it, because we don't really enforce it now, there's four-wheelers driving down the streets like we've talked about. So it's going to come out that we created a new problem, but it looks to me like we're just enforcing what we have.
Are we banning the ATVs and the four-wheelers off the streets?
What's the code say?
They were always supposed to be...
They'd ever have.
But it's okay for golf carts to be on the streets.
Yep.
I think that was a separate rule.
That makes no sense to me whatsoever. If I can ride my golf cart up here, why can't I ride my ATV up here?
You might want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
First aid?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzet?
No.
Okay. That passes. Moving on to item E. Consider an ordinance amending driveway culvert regulations in Oskaloosa. Second reading. Staff was requested to conduct research, provide recommendations on driveway culvert requirement updates to the city code. Currently, the Oskaloosa Municipal Code states that driveway culverts must be either corrugated metal pipe, acronym of CMP, or reinforced concrete pipe, which is RCP, with a minimum diameter of 12 inches. Thermoplastic pipes such as high-density polyethylene, which is HDPE, and polyvinyl chloride, which is PVC, are not listed as allowable materials for driveway culverts. Staff research indicates that many cities only permit the RCP or CMP for the driveway culverts. However, there are cities that have adopted plastic pipes for driveway culverts. Some are enforced with department guidelines and some with code updates that provide specifications. And the major revisions recommended by staff-based research are as follows. First, create specifications to meet the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials and American Society for Testing and Materials Standards. Second, create specifications for the types of pipe based on the amount of cover. And third, allow HDPE and PVC for driveway culverts if they meet the AASHTO and ASTM standards. Y'all keeping up with this?
Yeah.
Okay. At their meeting on April 14, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended by a vote of 5-0 to approve the code changes with the stipulation that these regulations be stated to comply or stated to apply to the residential driveways. And so, then we've got the various adjustments to code listed. Do you have a motion approving this?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
First aid?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item F. Let's consider an ordinance to establish the no-parking zone along both sides of South Fourth Street between 13th Avenue East and 15th Avenue East. This is the second reading. The Public Works Department received a resident request to restrict parking along South Fourth Street from 13th Avenue East to 15th Avenue East. Currently, there are no parking restrictions on either side of the section of South Fourth Street. The street pavement is chip seal with the width of the street varying from 22 to 26 feet. The section of street does, this section of street does experience a higher-than-normal level of bus and truck traffic due to the presence of Oskaloosa School Bus Garage and other businesses that are along 13th Avenue East. Planning and zoning at their meeting on March 10 of 2014 considered the resident request to restrict parking along South Fourth Street from 13th Avenue East to 15th Avenue East. At this meeting, they asked staff to research the possibility of converting the section of street to a one-way, southbound traffic-only. Survey was then conducted with the one-way street option listed along with the parking restriction options. Of the respondents, two, namely 20%, wanted to leave the on-street parking as-is. Seven, 70%, wanted to prohibit parking on both sides at all times. And one of them, 10%, wanted to prohibit parking on the west side at all times. None of the respondents opted to convert the street to a one-way street. At their meeting on April 14, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended by a vote of 3 to 2 to approve southbound one-way traffic along South Fourth Street from 13th Avenue East to 15th Avenue East along with a parking restriction along the east side of said section of South Fourth Street. The city council, at our meeting on April 21, approved the first reading of the ordinance to restrict parking along both sides of South Fourth Street between 13th Avenue East and 15th Avenue East. And so, there's a note in here. If parking is restricted along both sides of South Fourth Street between 13th and 15th Avenue East, then there's an ordinance amendment that's indicated that has to be put into code. And there's various alternative actions that are suggested as well. So, do we have a motion? We'll leave it at that. You know, the title is to consider an ordinance for no parking along both sides of Fourth Street between 13th Avenue East and 15th Avenue East. Do we have a motion to support that?
I'll make a motion to deny it.
Okay.
Second.
Second from Tom. Discussion?
It sounds, I don't really get the whole issue. But it sounded like to me there was some real headway made here at the end, that there might be another possibility on the solution. Is that right?
It sounded like there could be.
So-
So, if we could, you know, do, you know, the length of a semi or whatever. I don't know what the exact amount is. No parking from 15th North on both sides to allow the buses and the semis to get turned. It would still allow parking then to the north for the two properties in question, from what I heard. Seems like we win.
Sounds like a win-win to me.
So, whether we can amend this motion-
You're shaking your head.
I mean, I'm one of the property owners. I can't speak for all of them. But having, going there almost every day for different reasons, it would take care of the issue that I've seen. But now, I don't- Rick, what do you think? Is it bus traffic that's causing it? What's going on?
I don't think it's the bus traffic.
What's the problem there?
Yeah, would you come up to the microphone, please? In your name, please.
And I think it's just the semi-traffic, basically. Like maybe Midland Metals. And they like to go that way so they can back in from their left. So, the truck driver can back in from their left, I think, is what the issue is.
There's a couple of trucking things for truckings up there, and the way they back in, and-
Yeah, V-ster would come in that way.
Because in the past, I had to put a post up in the yard to keep the trucks out of my yard because they'd turn the corner and have to go up in the yard to make the corner.
Would it be possible to amend this?
That's what I was wondering.
As Doug is saying, and then go ahead and vote and get it off so we don't have to talk about it next week. Does this solution seem to be something that you think?
The here-to-corner away, I think would probably solve a lot of that.
I don't think you can just amend this.
Yeah, we may have to go back to the property owners if we're going to do something different. Akila, should we have to resurvey?
Do we have to?
You don't have to. It's just something that we try to do to reach out to the residents in the area or the affected property. I guess what I would do is if you're going to change it again completely, I would reset it as a first reading next time.
Okay.
And vote it down this time, and then bring it back?
Sure. If that's the direction you'd like to go. And then, we could work up something that would be, I don't know how many feet, 60 feet or 30 feet or whatever it is.
Do you have something you want to say?
I just do have one observation. Because the traffic in this area affects not only the businesses on 13th, but the residents on 15th. And that is zoned residential. The street between our residences is also zoned residential. I think the zoning that the city is committed to should have, carry some weight there. That it isn't simply a vote of one street or another. If you're going to bring this down to a vote of commercial interest on 13th as opposed to residential interest on 15th, then let's expand it to the residential area on 15th. Obviously, if you are going to only survey 13th Street, then obviously, the vote is going to be lopsided. But I might make the point that the folks back on 13th don't live in that area. They do do business there. We do understand the need for commercial interest there. But residents also have certain needs for safety. And certainly, an increase in traffic there at that corner not only affects our properties, but our nearby neighbors also are affected residentially-wise. Judy, who lives across the street, her driveway is right smack at that intersection on the other side of the street. So, there are more residences that will be affected by what happens on that corner. So, it's just an observation, as far as I'm concerned. If we are going to go back and ask everybody in the neighborhood, then perhaps we can ask the residents as well. I don't think that you'll find that the vote will be quite so lopsided. Thank you.
Is there a way to solve this without the city? You made a comment. This city is doing this. There seems to be a misconception that we're in here making no parking all over the city. We don't want to do that. We're just, all we're doing is we're taking requests. And we're, I'm sitting here going, "You made a great point." I'm like, "Can you get us out of this"?
Yes. Here's my observation. Oskaloosa in general is undergoing growing pains. Our neighborhood in particular is undergoing growing pains. As my neighbor pointed out, had we been apprised initially of what the complaint was, we could have probably worked it out voluntarily. As a matter of fact, without even knowing what the complaint was, we attempted to do that. We don't want to see it here. We think that all over the city, people like us and in neighborhoods like ours, we make allowances. We suffer some inconvenience. We do occasionally have to drive around, park cars. And if you look at Sheriff Avenue and Market, there's congestion. If you look at K Avenue and Market, look at the parking at the apartments on K Avenue. Everybody shares the street. And we certainly would love to do that. We don't want to be restricted from using the street. We want to share the street. That's my point.
Eric, there's a couple of things.
And we're willing to do so. Thank you.
Jake may be able to help us. But I think it's illegal to park in the parking, isn't it, in Oskaloosa? I've been ticketed for it. You can't park your car in the parking.
The right-of-way?
Yeah.
The right-of-way?
Yeah. That car in the white picture, that car's illegally parked, I think.
He's in the right-of-way.
He's in, yeah. He's got to be parked in the street. If it's street-legal parking, he's got to be in the street. He can't be in the parking. Is that right, Jake?
That's right.
May I make one observation about that?
Well, let me finish. Because, so where I'm headed with this is, if you're both going to park, you're never going to get parking on both sides of that street. You might get back to this one because if they park illegally, the street's not wide enough. And my other confusion is this. In October is when I first heard of this, because I had two bus drivers bring it to my attention. And at that time, I said, "You guys need to take it back to the school system and bring it forward if it's a dangerous situation." Now, what I'm understanding here, the school board looks like, or the school was asked, but I guess they didn't bring this forward. So, that's my information.
I just wanted to address the width of the street. The curb opening for Fourth is 28 feet. Same as Second, same as Seventh. It does not have curbs. But the narrowest part of the street, and I have my tape measure out there, is 26 feet. It's not 22 feet. And we think that if it's supposed to be a 28-foot street defined by that curb, the cars should, we should have 28 feet of width parked. Makes it exactly the same as Second Avenue, where there's a whole lot more truck traffic going to Cloud than there is going into that street.
Well, they aren't supposed to be, but we don't enforce that either. If you notice, the signs are posted. They are not supposed to be on the south half of South Second. They're supposed to be going north. But that's another story.
Well, they're there.
Well, and I might address the parking on the right-of-way up on K Avenue, right at the corner there by Market Street. The parking is on the right-of-way. Those vehicles are not even, not even angle parking in. They are backed in. Their back ends or front ends hang over the sidewalk. And the other extremity of their vehicle is in the street. So, while the city may look at certain situations differently when it comes down to, as you make the point, is it legal or not legal to park on the right-of-way, I think that there is a leeway to, obviously, we do that up on K, to alleviate certain problems. So, we don't, I don't want to come across as saying we are unwilling to work with the folks back on 13th. We certainly have been trying to do that. And we are hoping that what we have already voluntarily done alleviates the problems. And Doug, as you said, there may be some issues there. If there's other issues that we don't know about, you know, we would certainly. But one thing I do know about the bus bar, and as I brought up at planning and zoning, sometimes it's just a matter of being a good neighbor. If you are in, if you are driving a school bus or driving a truck, you know that at certain times in the city, there are areas that you avoid just because of the constriction and the traffic. You know getting out of McDonald's at a certain time of the day is bad. You know, on Friday and Saturday night, trying to get from Penny's to across there, that also is bad. You avoid those areas. Why? Because we just know better. And we think that the folks back on 13th, and also us as residents, now understand the complexity of the issue. We try to avoid problems if we can and be good neighbors. We think that it would be helpful if the community school district would also understand that there are other inconveniences that everyone suffers in that area. Not just commercial interests, not just residential things, but many other things that people who live there do put up with in order to accommodate commercial traffic. We simply would like some consideration in return. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to deny. Any other comments? Roll call.
What am I voting for? So, I'm not voting for the motion we have. We're just not turning down the second reading?
Right. We're turning down the second reading.
You could, I mean, let me muddy the water. You could motion to deny and then direct staff to come back with another item in the future, which would do what? That's what we would look for. That helps us.
Okay. And I think Doug made a, came up with somewhat of a solution. And that would be what we would deny this and ask you to bring back on the agenda this new idea.
Yeah, I don't know the exact distance, but I'd certainly like to accommodate the residents and make that turn a little better for the trucks and the buses. And if there's a way that we can do that and all win, that's what I'd like for staff to evaluate. I don't know if there's 82, I don't know if it's 60-foot or... So, I don't want to put a number on it. I would just like for you guys to evaluate if there's a good way to do that.
Is that okay with you, Jason?
Why do we have to do that? Why don't we let them evaluate it? Maybe they can solve it on their own, and we're out of it. I mean, if you feel like we need to be involved, you know, we're here. But I kind of see, and everybody's like, "Oh." You know, here's the way that I feel about it. If you guys can solve, hold on. Just hold on, I got it. If we can get away and you guys can handle it, great. If, if we can get away and you guys can handle it, great. If we need to come back and do it, then, then we should do it. Right now, no. I'm on middle on both sides of this.
So the, the motion is just to pull the plug on the, the no parking on both sides of South 4th Street? So back to the roll call.
Then that doesn't allow us a way to look at other options?
At this point, no. But you could, I assume would be...
You come back with a motion after this one.
Yeah.
If you want to put that on the table, make a motion.
I got a motion after that. Okay. All right, then I guess I'm voting yes.
Yes to pull the plug.
I'll need two hours of consultation in the morning.
Wait, the motion was to deny.
Yeah, motion deny, and so yes would be in agreement with your motion.
All right. Okay.
Negative motions are no fun whatsoever.
Callahan, Jerry?
Uh, yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Yeah, so we pulled the plug on, so that there's, on no parking on both sides. Anything else directing staff?
Why? Now I can make a motion.
Yeah, Joe, go for it.
I've been out to that area. I'm not as well, I don't live out there, but I've been out there. What I, let me get my map here. Anyways, what I would make recommendations, before I do that, isn't there a fire hydrant on that corner?
There is, yes.
There is. I'll make a reg, a motion to just do a no parking from the curb back 25, 25 feet on either side. The reason I say that, the morning I went out there, I did meet up with a school bus coming down and there was a green Jeep parked across the street. And he was up, he was up the road a little bit, maybe a little bit more than 25 feet. Well, you know, it's a small street, people got to take their time. Bus coming, I pulled behind the Jeep, waited till the bus went by and drove around. And the reason for the 25 feet that way, anybody turning into the road, there's no car parked right there and might cause an accident. And plus, on this other side, there's a fire hydrant and you don't want to be parked there blocking the fire hydrant. That's my recommendation, doing no parking from 25 feet.
On both sides of the road.
On both sides.
Just want you to make a motion that staff looked at it.
I'm sorry. I went on rambling.
Motion for staff?
For both sides.
For staff to look at.
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second for staff to look at it?
Second.
Okay.
Is that what your motion was, staff to look at it?
Yep, after I talked him into it, yeah.
Okay.
We've talked about this long enough.
Good enough.
Anybody else want to comment? Roll call, please.
Callahan, Jerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling? Yates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Taking us to item number G. Consider an ordinance amending the Oskaloosa Municipal Code reflecting parking restriction along both sides of North 11th Street from C Avenue East to J Avenue East. This is the second reading. When reviewing proposed parking changes along E Avenue East, city staff became aware that a parking restriction along the west side of North 11th Street was not listed in the municipal code. Currently, signs indicating a parking restriction are in place along both sides of North 11th Street from C Avenue East to J Avenue East. The city code states that parking is restricted along the east side only. This section of North 11th Street is 26 feet wide from back of curb to back of curb, which is too narrow to allow both two-way traffic and on-street parking. So therefore, staff is recommending council approve the ordinance to make a change to the Oskaloosa Municipal Code reflecting the existing parking restriction along both sides of North 11th Street from C Avenue East to J Avenue East. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Any discussion?
Third time we did that tonight.
Roll call.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callahan, Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item H, consider approval of a pay request number six to DeLong Construction, $23,319.85 for work completed on the West Area Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. City of Oskaloosa received the pay request from DeLong Construction for work completed through April 28th of 2014 on the West Area Sanitary Sewer Improvements Project. Staff reviewed the pay request, found it to be satisfactory for work completed on the project. And pay request six reflects work completed on the pump station, the backfill, grading, and seeding. Progress payments for the contract and Iowa Code's Chapter 573 need to be made for labor and materials incorporated into the work. The progress payment or retainage percentage will not relieve the contractor of any obligation to repair any defective work or materials. Staff is recommending approval that the council approve pay request six in the amount of $23,319.85 to DeLong Construction Incorporated. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callahan, Jerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, item I. Oh, that passes. Item I. Consider approval of the request from the Cellar Peanut Pub at 206 Rock Island Avenue for outdoor entertainment, extend outdoor service area, alcohol consumption outside building premises, and a temporary variance from the noise ordinance. Mr. Marty Duffy, the owner of the Cellar Peanut Pub at 206 Rock Island Avenue, has submitted a request to have outdoor entertainment, extend outdoor service area, alcohol, alcohol consumption outside the building premises, and temporary variance from the noise ordinance on Saturday, May 17th, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. The subject property is currently zoned as Urban Corridor District, which does not permit outdoor entertainment. The current land use is as a cocktail lounge where alcohol cannot be consumed outside the building premises. Alcohol consumption outside the building premises on the parking lot area violates open container law. The Oskaloosa Municipal Code does not allow for land uses similar to a beer garden where alcohol consumption is permitted outside of the building premises. And Mr. Duffy is also requesting a variance from Oskaloosa Municipal Code Section 9.12.040 for the noise standards outlined in the ordinances. The fencing and existing, the fencing and exiting provisions will need to be inspected for the safety of the occupants and any structures associated with the entertainment will also require permits and inspections to assure safety. In addition, vehicular parking will also need to be arranged for those attending since the present parking lot will be used for commercial recreation. If Cloud Valve Company parking lot is used for this event, then Mr. Duffy needs the approval from Cloud Valve Company. The above request for outdoor commercial recreation, extension of outdoor service area, alcohol consumption in the parking lot area, and a noise ordinance on variance on the commercial property will need council approval. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Benzetton?
Yes.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callahan, Jerry?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item J is, consider a motion directing the city manager to execute the necessary documents for acquisition and demolition of 517 B Avenue West. The property located at 517 B Avenue West was recently condemned by the city due to unsafe living conditions. All residents have been ordered out of the property and the building secured until required improvements can be corrected. Since that time, the property owner, Mr. Kelly Blunt, has approached the city and offered to deed the property over to the city free and clear of any liens. Staff is seeking the council's input on acquiring the property at no cost from Mr. Blunt with the intent of pursuing demolition of the building as soon as practical. The city would be responsible for the demolition cost as well as any property maintenance that would need to occur thereafter. Staff is recommending the building at 517 B Avenue West be demolished regardless of ownership. Funding for this demolition could come from the funds set aside for the A Avenue and Market Street Corridor Improvement Program. Do we have a motion supporting this?
So move.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
Do we have any estimate on what the demolition cost will be?
None. And that's, I guess I would say, in addition to seeking direction to potentially demolish it, if we could sell it or if there is a way of refurbishing it, yes, we'd like to explore that or moving it off-site or something. But no, we do not know the cost of, of removal at this point in time. We just got this, what, Thursday it was?
Yes.
So I've heard a number of $30,000, but I don't know if that's accurate. That didn't come from us.
What do we think? According to the appraiser, the land value's $16,000, $17,000?
Yes, sir. And the building at 55 for a total of $71.6. I think that's generous.
But we're saying the building needs to be demolished. So when we demolish it, we'll spend $30,000 to demolish it to end up with a $16,000 piece of property?
Potentially.
Quite frankly, the lot's probably worth more empty.
Well, there's, there's no doubt in my mind about that, especially that location.
So we condemn it. He doesn't want to tear it down. He gives it to the city and it turns into our problem.
Well, that, that's kind of the dilemma with this item is, yeah, if we start putting pressure on people and they don't want to do anything with it, what happens? Well, yeah, they always come to us. They don't always. They, they can come to us to say they want to walk away and...
That turned around pretty quick, too, didn't it, really, from what he was going on about earlier, not having so much in it?
Yeah, the alternative is we can proceed with the order to condemn the property and quite frankly, we can pursue jail time for the owner if he doesn't comply with rehab or demolition. So those are the options. If you say no, then, then that's probably the route we would, that is the route we would proceed with because that's already in motion.
Which, if I can add to that, too, number one, obviously none of that's correct. At the same time, the city has previously paid money to buy some properties to go ahead and demolish the place, too, and this is one we would be getting, having given to us for nothing.
But it's really not on the A Avenue corridor.
It is not, obviously. It's, it's visible, of course. It's a highly visible location.
I'm okay with this one because of the location of where it's at. What I'm not, what I would like to know is the demolition costs and what if we find a gas well or something underneath there? Is he going to be on the hook for some of us? That's, that's where I get...
Once it's ours, it's going to be ours.
Once it's ours, it's ours.
Obviously, we can, we can delay the, the action on this, I suppose, and, and try to get bids on demolition if you want to, if you'd rather know that before we go in to an agreement, which I don't have a problem with. It was just, we were trying to get this in front of you as soon as we could.
And I, I like, Jason, I'm, I'm in favor of it. It's not in the corridor, but it is in a location that I certainly support it. I'm probably not as concerned about the unknowns as maybe I should be. I just like another cost. I mean, if it's, if it's a reasonable, reasonable cost to tear it down, it seems like it's worth it. I just don't have an idea of what that would be.
And I'd like to have that, but okay, you come back next week, $60,000. You're going to put a guy, you're going to put him in jail? I mean, ultimately, you're just, you're either going to put him in jail or you're going to take the, you're going to take it. And, you know, you know, the location where it's at, I think it's good for us. I think this time it's probably a good deal to go with it.
What's his name, is that commercial zone or?
Residential, three.
But it could be changed pretty easy.
I would never say that. You could always, they could apply for a rezone. We'd have to look at everything else around here. But it could be amended.
All right.
Just looking at the, the picture up there, or that we have displayed, so I'm trying to remember what that building is immediately to the east.
That's a apartment, that's the...
So that's our, more apartment.
And then to the east or west is a little house.
One little house there, yeah.
And then the rest of it, what, sheds and garages?
There's one more house between there and the track.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so our three makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, right there.
Okay. Anyway, let's see, where are we?
Wonder where you found the old pictures, because that building hasn't looked like that for a long time.
It's all online. All online.
Yeah, but that's what...
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second for executing necessary documents for acquisition and demolition. Any further comments?
Without any concern with cost?
Without any concerns at this point.
I'm assuming they're going to get three or four bids, you know, or one.
We get multiple quotes on it.
Roll call, please.
Forsteh?
Yes.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
No.
Callahan, Jerry?
No.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
And it passes, 4-3. Moving on, item eight. Any other items from city staff, starting with city manager?
I'll hand this out and we can talk about it later. How about that? It's the route I'm going with tonight. More to come. That's all I have there.
Okay. The city clerk, anything?
No, sir.
The city attorney, anything?
Oh, nothing, I'm sorry. I was reading over Jason's shoulder, I apologize.
The intriguing documentation.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, this is an update to the, the project list and the goal sheet that we typically review in June and again right before my review typically.
Oh, God, it's even got some more. You're all on there, look at that.
That's ideally, we'd like to get you on quarterly updates with that. So it's been a while since I've had it.
I got a magnifier at home.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, let's go on to city council information. Jason, how about we start with you? Tom? Doug?
Nothing, sir.
Good, Tom?
Nothing. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Joe? Okay. I don't have anything else to add. It's getting a little bit long as far as meetings go. And so, let's see, the last item on the agenda is to consider holding a closed session under Iowa Code Section 21.5.1(c) to discuss strategy with council on matters currently in litigation or in which litigation is imminent, where disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the city's position. Do we have a motion to go into closed session? Okay, any discussion?
And I would say this, Mayor Council, this is optional. If you want to go into a closed session to talk about the litigation, the petition that was filed by the Water Department against the city of Oskaloosa, we can do that.